So we all have those kind of funny stories in our relationship, but.
That's fun. Well, where should we begin? Thank you so much for having me in y'all's home.
Well, thank you for coming MJ, we really appreciate this.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
We love, we love getting any kind of exposure out there we can.
Yeah, well, I.
Andrea loves to have entertainment, she loves to come over.
I do love to, I do love to entertain.
Oh, that's fun.
I'm waiting for our house to get done, so that way I can start having like parties and things.
Oh, fun. Well, why don't you tell me a little bit about what got you into, well, tell me about yourself first.
Okay, um, so my name is Andrea Rossfeld. Really, I'm just a born and bred Texan. I, I grew up in the Dallas Fort Worth area. I went to school at Arizona State because I actually had a high school friend go there. She convinced me in a very conniving way to transfer over there. She had me visit her in March. March in Arizona was beautiful. I moved out there in August, one hundred and thirteen, was not beautiful. So, but I learned, I, I actually uh finished my degree study there and then I just stayed for a while traveling, just trying mostly young twenty or something year olds, we try to figure out what we wanna do with our lives. And then I uh decided after traveling for quite some time, I would go back to start my masters program, so I did start doing a masters uh taking prerequisites for our masters in biomedical engineering. Long story short, too late, I actually, I got into a horrific car accident, uh someone ran a red light and T-boned me and yeah, it's pretty, pretty gnarly. I woke up in the, in the ambulance, actually like in the neck brace and everything, I just all I remember is like waking up and just I wiggle my fingers, I wiggle my toes, I went, okay, I can feel everything, I'm good. Yeah, but I ended up being just, I've been up in okay, but it derailed me because I actually ended up having a five months of like being bedridden and PT work and stuff to, to get everything back to.
Oh my gosh, now did y'all know each other at this point?
No, we, we had not met, so during, after my recovery was over, when I started feeling human again, I started getting out there and dating and that's actually when I met Zachary and then, um, and then I was all set to go back and finish my masters when um, we'll just say we had a blessing, call, we'll call him a blessing and a surprise, you know, Grayson came into our lives, so. You know, it just life takes, takes you on a journey and you just gotta go with it. So then, you know, um, I decided to get, to stop my program to work because I wanted to uh support my husband now, you know, then boyfriend, to get his law degree because I knew that was his dream. And so I said, we're gonna make your dream come true still. And we'll do whatever it takes to do it. And that's really what kinda brought us to Waco. He got an amazing offer to Baylor Law. And um.
Before the pandemic.
Before the pandemic. And then, yeah, just, I mean, a lot of places were, were, were seeking him out, but I was like, I've heard Baylor's pretty good babe, we should probably look at that. So we did, and that's what brought us to Woodway and we found this house, uh realtor churches and, and I was like, it needs work, a lot of it, but I really like it. I think it has a lot of potential. So that's what brought us to Woodway. I just, I, the community was something I first loved. I loved all the trees and the wooded areas. I just thought, wow, this is really special. And then we didn't even realize that the lake is like, literally like, little bit that way. So close, I was like this, so we, when we go for walks through the neighborhood, you know, we get to see the lake and.
The first thing she said was, why didn't we get a house that oversaw the lake? Cause that's gonna add another hundred thousand dollars to that house.
But I was like, it's so pretty, but no, I'm actually really happy we rented it up, so. And we just kinda made a little life for ourselves, um. Now then, you know, to kind of jump into why I decided to run for council. Really, it was just out of frustration. I, as soon as we moved into this home, the, we had boxes, you know, as you always have everywhere in the garage. And a rainstorm, you know, our Texas thunderstorms, we're famous for, came through and our garage flooded all the way up to the door, like it's a four foot drop, yeah, right here, all the way in, rainwater was just pouring in from the street, coming all the way up and I was like and we, and there's French drains outside the garage to help with that, so even those could not combat what was happening and it was just almost ridiculous. Every rainstorm, we would be out there in our garage, thank goodness I worked from home with our brooms sweeping away the water, trying to keep it from coming into our home. And uh about three years ago, Dave Russell comes knocking on the door, letting me know he's writing for council and giving me the spiel and I kinda said to him, I said, what are they building behind the police station? That's that big building they're putting up. I was just curious. And he told me it was the Woodway Family Center. It's gonna be a new center. Uh, we have an old center, but here's, here's the new one.
And just before that, recently, before they agreed to build that one, they had just renovated the old one. So they like renovated the old one, knowing they wanted to plan up to build another one. And now after they got in trouble for that, and I was like, well, now we're gonna hire someone to tell us the old one's bad shape, so we're gonna get rid of it. Like, did anyone think anything through before they made any decision?
No, so what we, what really was the fire is that he told me it was a six point seven million dollar project of taxpayer money. And I looked at him, just like, my garage floods every single rainstorm because it's a broken storm drain that's not getting fixed. That, that was the cause, was a broken storm drain. And, and like you can see it's broken, it's like, it's falling in on itself. And he said, well, I'll, he got, he told me he'd contact the city hall and I contact, contacted them and even it just got fixed last fall.
We should tell them that before that, because we actually spoke to the, the neighbor, uh, the.
Our neighbor, next door, the business.
Fighting with the city as well, and the city was supposed to do it twice, and twice they voted, they voted against fixing it because they said it would cost too much money. When there, there are even our, our commercial neighbor was begging them to do it, so it's like no one in city council for years has been wanting to fix any infrastructure here. But they love to spend money. You're starting to get matters and people trying to say like, I think the article tried making it a little personal about her being like, oh, she was mad about her storm drain. It's like have you looked outside of other storm drains? Everyone's having that problem. We just finally met, met someone who had a connection with city council complaining enough times and they gave us, they said, oh hey, who you wanna talk to is this person, this person's responsible. So let me harass that person to get the job.
What ended up being is it wasn't even that storm drain particular, but under the roadway here, it was completely blocked. So no water was going through this area, so everything was collecting in from Boski into our yard, then goes into the front yard, then goes into our neighbor's yard and then down to the hi- his neighbor behind him. I mean, it was just this cascade of water just flooding through the neighborhood. And, like I said.
Boski right here.
It just slipped straight down, all the way down the streets, so. Um, like I said, last fall, they finally came in, crew came in, broke all that up, fixed it. But however, the storm drains themselves are still four foot by like two feet, almost eighteen inches. And there's no guard rail in front of it or any type of railing. A small child could easily trip and fall. I mean, think about their ball goes down the street, they run after it, they fall into that storm drain, pets, anyone, I mean, why, that's the infrastructure I'm talking about. That's, that's a huge liability for the city.
If you saw the ones down there, because that was not the deepest, the ones right here in front of our house. Lily has laid down next to looking inside and freaked out, because it was like, you fit perfectly to go inside, do not be laying down.
Near that, I, I mean, I put the fear of death in him, like, do not go near this side of the yard ever. Like, it just scares me, like, it's cause you know, what seconds things can happen, but that's just not just our, us, but that's any family, anyone walking through the neighborhood. And that's just one example. I'm sure we could drive through any of these neighborhoods and find storm drains just like that. I mean, so that's, what, that was the fire that ignited me. I, I was like, I can't believe that they would spend that kind of money here. Available money that, you know, they, they, that they found to build a family center when we already had one, but yet they won't fix the roads and the storm drains and things like that. So I was like, well, I'm gonna be, I, 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 and so Dave said, well, there, there, there'd be a chance if you really wanna ru- run or do something about it. Uh, in a few years, we're gonna have, you live in Ward two, that Ward seat will be up for reelection. Would you be consider, I was like, come, knock on my door again in a few years and we'll see where we're at. So that's where we're at and I'm just, I'm just a voice for the people.
Changed, she was trying to run since the moment he, she's met David.
Yeah, I mean, I, I've.
He's saying no, I was like, I don't wanna do this. Like, I'm, I was raised around politics, I don't wanna be around politics. I was like, I wouldn't do it, I live in part for politics, all I think about is politics. I'm like, I don't wanna be involved in politics. I was like, I know what the damage is, I know what happens. And she was like, no, I want it, I got it, I got it, I got it. And then it's like all this stuff's happening, I was like, this is what I told you, this is like, this is life of politics.
It's rough, I tell you.
It's much worse than I expected for such a local thing where you're not getting paid.
For local things, small town, volun- you know, unpaid position. I just wanted to be a voice for the people. Because I feel like a lot of us are busy in our own lives, trying to survive. We work, we put food on the table and, and that's all we're trying to do. Close our kids' backs and get through life, especially in these economic times, it's rough. And how many other people are having issues like this at their own homes or, or local, it, you know, whatever it is. And they don't know who to turn to, they don't know, and they don't feel like they have someone to represent them. I don't feel like our current city council, they, they're known for saying, I, I represent the city of Woodway, I don't represent the people. And I'm like, that's.
Story, story actually agreed with that sentence. She agreed with, she agreed with the comments, she's sure that was where I agree and it was because she everyone was just shocked that they were willing to say that so publicly to people. And then we're trying to say, well, that's a representative democracy and I'm like, you're stretching representative a little, little too, little too liberally there with the concept of I could just take anything and spend anything. It's like, that's not really how it works. You don't elect them to then just say, oh, I'm gonna raise taxes and build a seven million dollar project and I'm not gonna ask permission. Like, that's not how that, that's not what that means. And we were like, we, we don't think we have to vote on everything, but we're like, there should be a limit where if you're gonna spend millions of dollars, it goes up for like a, like a prop, like a, I forget what you call it, I forget what you call it, like a proposition two oh two or one oh one. Whatever they do on like, on, on my, my major counties and stuff, it's like, just put that up for a vote for us to choose.
Like, hey, everybody, do you want us to spend ten million dollars over here this, you know, over the next four years? And if the majority says, heck yeah, then we'll do it. But if the majority says, no, we'd rather you guys focus over here, then that's what the majority's speaking and that's who we, that's who we represent is the majority. And that, that's what we're here to do. And that's part of the whole transparency campaign. It, it, we, we, we wanna make government transparent because we're the taxpayers, we're the American citizen, we should know what our government, who is supposed to represent us, is doing all day, every day, so. And, and along with those transparencies, we want uh to livestream our city council meetings. The fact that they're not livestreamed, I think is absolutely ridiculous in this day and age.
One person to livestream. It would not cost that much money. You could probably get a kid in college or a kid at the high school, you probably would agree to do it for minimum wage. All it takes is a little GoPro and a YouTube channel, that's how you can livestream.
There is, there's more than enough funds to do something like that. I mean, most people don't realize this, but Woodway is sitting at a little over four point five million dollar surplus that we know of.
Let me say that because there's a lot of drama that we don't really know entirely a lot about, but there's a lot of things that we do know about, like factually speaking, we are, we are collecting millions more than what we're required to for our emergency fund. And everyone's wondering like, why do you keep wanting to raise taxes to do all these projects when you're admitting and bragging? You have almost, quite a few, I think they said what?
So we, there's a little over six million in the fund, we only need one point five million as an emergency fund for Woodway. So that's a, that's four point five plus.
It's like, this isn't your personal savings account. You don't get to save that money and then go, I'm gonna raise taxes to fund this thing. No. You have that surplus, use that first.
People talk about sidewalks and, and lighting, well, there's, there's that funding for it. They're just not wanting to spend it. Or, or spend it correctly. I mean, again.
It's in an emergency fund, is that what you said?
It's a, it's a surplus, it's in the emergency fund, is from the way we understood it. So it's a surplus in the emergency fund, so they're basically treating it as like, if you're attacking, you're attacking the emergency funds. No, no. If you wanna raise what's required in that emergency fund, how about you just raise what's required and I'm okay with that, like vote on it, like let's make it three million. I'm okay with that. But don't just be like, I'm gonna sneakily hide all this money, put it over here in this emergency fund, every time I have a surplus and then go, oh, we can't touch it. No, this isn't your personal bank account, stop. If you wanna do something, use the surplus you got. That's why we have a surplus. I think it's a good thing that we have a surplus. I don't think it's a bad thing, I'm just like, we should try to like, if, before we start raising money and doing all these, raising taxes, I mean, people like, let's make sure we can know, we can tell them, like, hey, we have this emergency fund we could use instead. That way it doesn't affect anybody and we can just regrow that. Regrow, or not, I should say regrow the emergency fund, but regrow the extra. We can regrow that extra that's in there. And that's kind of a helpful one, too.
That's great.
Really lack of money management with these, with the entire council.
What are some of those other points? You mentioned, you were talking about the transparency campaign.
So, yeah, transparency, you know, we, we as citizens should know more about what's going on with our government, local and grander, but what I can, what I can help with is local. And if elected, I'm gonna be doing my, my due diligence and my accuracy for like live streaming, posting up what the meetings are gonna be about. I plan to use my social media platforms and say, hey, everyone, this is what we're voting, mark your calendars, come to a meeting, speak your piece, we will listen. Here, email us. Um, I, I believe David Russell, that, he's also wanting to work on a voicemail system for, for city councils, so people can leave messages and say, and then we check those. To know what the people are talking, what people are wanting.
So like if people have a problem, they say, hey, I don't like this, and they call and leave a voicemail.
Yeah, so, yeah, call, call your local council person, be, I, I've done it for, um, gosh, it was uh in Waco. I, I, the McClanick office, it wasn't just Waco, but like, it was something about our internet pricing going up, so I called my local government and I said, hey, so I got a, a ish, a thing in the mail that internet's going up and this and that, I go, can you tell me about that? And they called me back within twenty four hours and, and gave me all the ins and outs and it was wonderful. I was, it's, Woodway should have that, why don't we?
That was, that was a good thing.
They were very responsive, but I said, within twenty four hours of me leaving a voicemail, I had a, a clerk calling me and giving me all the information I was asking for. So, I think, I, I think Woodway's missing the mark on that big time. So, uh, some of the other points, uh, like I said, I know everyone says it, but infrastructure and I, I would like to reallocate some of the funding so we can get it done a little faster. I mean, there are people who have complained to me while I'm door knocking about, you know, I would love my water to run regularly, like I, I have intermittent water service sometimes. And I'm like, well, that's not good, is it? So, and I understand, I do completely understand that these are planned in there and, and I understand that they are being worked on presently. But can we move it along a little faster? Woodway's not that big. Why is it taking years to do this?
I think after, because of her campaign, I don't know if it's just because of her campaign, but even the Waco Tribune announced that uh, Woodway's now re, re uh, they're reexamining the old plan for city of Woodway, for, for, for the infrastructure, for the water lines and sewer lines. I real, I saw an article, after they did the article on her, I saw another article like a day later of Woodway's now exam- reexamining itself, I forget what they called it. But it's the plan for to fix the infrastructure. So now they're gonna put on the table to see how we're gonna reexamine, because I think the old one, I forgot how many, but it was way before I mean, before all the council members, is the old plan. And so none of them bothered re, re look, look at the plan. And it's like, well, if everyone's complaining about it and now you're waiting for her because she's getting so much attention, now you're saying, oh, we're gonna look at it, we are gonna reexamine the plan. It's like, well, it's a little too late now. Now I feel like you're just doing it for like, you know, votes away from her. Are you gonna follow through and actually try to speed up these plans? Because there's no reason why we should have all these empty, and those giant potholes they keep putting on Boski. We should just try to avoid.
There's a brand new pothole right over in front of the dental office, right over here, brand new, it's been there about a week. I wonder how long it'll be till it's fixed. I can tell you as an insurance adjuster, I got my start in auto, you hit a pothole and blow that tire, it's not covered by your insurance. You will be paying out of pocket, so if you tear up your axle or anything else, it's considered a collision, you're paying out of pocket for all your repairs.
I always joke that Waco's owned by the the tire company, it's Discount Tire. Waco is, I mean, I love Woodway, because Waco's so, so much worse when it comes to potholes, they just never get fixed and some of those roads, it looks like they're busy roads, they're just destroyed and everyone's, and these tire companies, every time we wanna go get our tires checked, you have to wait in a long line. So I always just make a joke, I'm like, these guys must run our councils. They're just like, oh, we don't need to fix it anytime soon, they're gonna keep coming anyways.
But, and that's like, and, 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 and also something that I, I wanna talk about as, as my, my experience. Nobody likes to insurance adjuster when they make a claim. I realize I'm probably one of those hated people in my employment, but truthfully, we look for every way to cover your policy, but there are things that are just where our hands are tied. And something that I wanna express really to the, all the businesses here in Woodway, with these water main breaks. If your water main breaks due to a wear, tear, deterioration problem, you've got low water, we're on a boil only because of bacteria growth and like that, let me tell you. I almost will guarantee your policy will not have coverage for that, because wear, tear, deterioration is always a limitation, exclusion of a policy. So if your business is shut down one, two, three, four, five days because of no water, you're not recouping those funds from your policy. So businesses should be well aware of the infrastructure issues we're having here in Woodway, especially with the development and everything going on. I love seeing the new businesses, I love that we've got Dutch Bros now, maybe from Arizona, that's something that I was like happy to see. Uh, we've got the new, we've got the new chocolate ice cream parlor there too, so, um, I mean, I'm, I'm excited, I'm always, every time I see a building, I'm always like, oh, I wonder what we're getting next, I'm always so excited. Uh, because we are small and we're growing, but with this building, we need to be a responsible city and make sure that water is available, not only to the business, to the residents. Because again, we lose water, people don't realize what an inconvenience that is. And it could be a big financial hurt for someone someday. But, um, but that's what I bring to the table, I bring my experience. I, 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 I work with policies of all types. Uh, right now, my, my area of focus is commercial policy, because that's the department I'm in. I work with all business types. I, I jokingly say I work from like the mobile pet groomers to the oil rigs in the Panhandle. I do all business types. Uh, so it's really nothing I haven't seen, uh. But I, I read policies, I read legal language, I, I constantly work with attorneys uh, to settle, settle cases. I work with engineers on a weekly basis. I read their engineering reports. Oh, gosh, how much, how much more do I do?
She reads mine, actually. I have like a property inspection report, I'm like, I don't understand this babe, can you, can you tell me? As you, the first time I showed you, one, one of the guys that I like, just wow, this guy's better than most of the commercial ones I read. Okay, well, that's a guy I'm using.
He has a really good inspector that he uses, he's amazing, actually, he does really great work. But like, just for example, we, I went to the new grand opening of the Woodway Family Center and I went into the community room or party room, whatever they wanna call it, and I looked at the ceiling, oh, there's water leak already. I mean, I see damages and I just, on, it's what I'm trained to do. And I couldn't believe, I'm like, well, someone has a leak up there somewhere. It's either an HVAC system or a roof leak, so somebody better get up there and check it, because the ceiling tiles are already stained. And they just built it, that was the grand opening, and so I was like, wow, it's another, just another little dig at us, I feel like.
I, I didn't realize how your background plays into what's needed on city council.
I, I do feel like I have a lot to bring and, and, and I, I realize right now is, it's, it is gonna be a, an uphill battle. I realize a lot of people support my opponent, she's been there, she's the incumbent. I have nothing against her to say other than just her voting record. She has voted to support Amin and all the projects and all the budget increases and, and never, she's never said no.
Find one time where she's told him no. And we've already found quite a few differences that we can point between her and Dave and the, the Daves. Because people are trying to say that, they're trying, they're trying to create a blockade, I'm like, we pointed out several things they differ on. The only thing they agree on is public transparency and basically any of those corruption.
Fiscal responsibility, like, and that's, we just wanna use the money that we get into our city and, and use it wisely, because that's our job, as, as a civil servant. You're supposed to be using this money that is paid in taxes, using it back into the community and again, infrastructure first, we've gotta get everything updated so that way Woodway can continue to grow and populate and develop. Because if we can't support new development correctly, we're just opening ourselves up for a potential liability and risk later down the road. And that's just the bottom line. I don't care what anyone else has to say about that. And that's the background I bring to the table. And I just, I just hope people see that and realize that, like, I, I really feel I could do a good job here within Woodway and really feel like I, I can be a voice of the people because that's who I am. I'm an average Joe. I'm not here, I don't have any development plans. I, 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 I jokingly say, I can't even sell a policy, so I can't even like re-reward on uh commissions or something as an agent does. I'm not an agent, I'm an adjuster. So there's no financial gain for me to be here, other than just a voice like for everybody else. And that's really the, the feedback I get a lot from people, is they just say, thank you, thank you for running and I, and we, we appreciate you running because we need people to be more involved and that's just where I said, I told Zach years ago, I feel like I just have this calling, like I feel like I just, I just, I, I can't financially step away from my job to be more involved as I would love to be. But this is something small that I can at least, I can at least feel like I'm doing good and I'm doing something for our community and just as, as the average American citizen out there. You know, I don't wanna make this the haves versus the have nots, but a lot more of us are have nots these days, and so we really just just, you know, it's the little things, water, sewer, roads, schools, all that kind of stuff. It's just, you know, I know schools in the city council, but still, we go to Woodway Elementary, we want the schools to do well. And I just, that's, everything here, we just love it, you know, we're, we're happy here. And we just wanna see it done properly.
It's great.
Thank you.
Thank y'all. Well, is there anything else you guys like to talk about or share or?
I mean.
We can, we can end it there, we can keep going, if there's something.
I mean, I. I could, I, I do, I'm a chit chatter, I do, I love to chit chat and talk, uh, I tell people all the time, ask me anything and.
Well, tell me a little bit about y'all's family. So you have one boy?
We have one son, um, he, he, I, 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 I'm gonna be a gushy mom for a second. We are very blessed. He's a good boy. We, he's, he's been well, healthy, just so sweetheart, I mean, we sometimes tease each other saying like, I don't know where he got all that kindness from, because sometimes I'm like, I'm not that kind.
I think he, he responded well to me being a very strict parent, because I was nicknamed Zack Attack. I just attacked everything. I was a wild, wild kid, I was that way all the way until college, really. Ironically, it's like college, everyone goes crazy. College is when I calm down. I got around the crazies, I was like, ah, I'm done with this, no, I'm gonna calm down.
He's, he's our, he is our everything and so, uh, right now we're playing Little League Coach Pitch and I just I love it. I think I told you earlier, I was like, I just get so excited watching all the little kids play and you know, when they make a big play or they score, that, that, when they beam with such happiness, it's like, it makes my heart.
It's so cute watching them try to be like, they don't know what to do, they don't know how to glow, so they'll be like, this one guy with this one kid, I remember one time he, he came off across the home plate and he was just like, I think he was trying to dance, but he didn't know what dance to do. Eventually, he just kinda jumped up in the air and ran, ran, ran into the dugout, it was so funny, I'm just like, they don't know how to show off, but they're so excited.
It was cute on this one day, this one game that, that, this one of his teammates comes out and he like hyped up the crowd, he was like, dude, he did one of these, so he was like to the base, to bat, and I was like, oh my gosh, that's so cute, I was like, yeah. But, uh, it's just, I love it, I, I love the community sports and, and getting to know our neighbors and community that way, um. We started at the YMCA for, for soccer and T-ball there and then uh, when he outgrew the T-ball, we moved over to the Midway, uh, Little League and I, I'm really, I'm really impressed so far with their program and So I'm very excited that we're a part of it and uh, so that's about our son, um, about us, you know, like, um, my, my, my focus and goals in life right now are just being a mom, being a wife, being a good employee and being a good member of society. And hopefully a city councilwoman, I, I mean, fingers crossed. Uh, we're members of the, uh, Bishop Louis Riker, uh, Catholic Church, that's where we, we go to service on Sundays, um.
Beautiful church.
Yeah, we, we initially weren't seeing Jerome's, but it just wasn't a mesh, good, we just felt like it was just a good fit for us and then through friends, uh, who are, who are parishioners, uh, Louis Riker, they're like, well, come to church with us, you know, check out our church. And the, the minute we walked in, Zach was like, oh, like, they do all the incense and everything, so it's just, it's, it's just, it smells amazing.
Where everyone's either Catholic or Jewish, there is no really anything in between in Arizona. So to me, every Catholic church looks like Bishop Riker's church. So going here, going to the church, I'm like, this isn't the right church, this isn't the right church, this is not how my churches look. Not a Catholic church. And I go to that church, I'm like,
We like the traditional, the Gothic style and, and I, I really love the community there, a lot of young families who go there, because when we were going to church in Arizona, it, it, unfortunately, it was, it was a lot of your older crowd, very, very few young families. And then we moved here and it's like, I, I mean, it might be because the school is a part of them, but just a lot of young families, young kids throughout, throughout the, the service.
Parents, I think, are my age.
Yeah, it's really great, it's, 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 it's a great feel there, so we just, we felt more apart. And so anyways, that's where we, we, we go to church and other than that, you know, I, I work from home, so I'm always here surrounded by the dogs that I love and, and just keep an eye, I keep an eye on my neighborhood. If I see something going on, I'm always like, calling neighbors, like, hey, you said, there's somebody at your house, is this supposed to be someone at your house? Oh, good, okay, just looking out. You know, things like that. We always look, we look out for each other. Our neighbor next door does the same for us, like, we go out of town, I always tell them, okay, we're gonna be out of town, so they'll pop over and check our mail and check on our house for us, so. That kind of community, um, we really love, we, and didn't get a lot of that in Arizona. I mean, we, we really didn't know your neighbors in Arizona. And I missed that moving from Texas. It was something very sad to me out there. Um, so when we moved back, I was so excited, I was like, I can't wait to meet neighbors and have like neighborhood cookouts and things. Um, we have also neighbors, one street over, we get together, um, every few weeks and we do game night. It is so much fun. Uh, they have a wall of games that they bring over, and so they bring over a few, which we play different ones.
Her husband has a, uh, wall of like bookshelves, but instead of there being books, it's just games. You see him looking through them, like, I remember once when we first there, he's like looking through them like they're books, and I'm just like, he just knows every, how many games does this guy play?
And they're all so organized and put together, like he has no missing pieces. Right? I'm always like, dang it, where's the last puzzle piece? Right? I'm always like, dang it, where's the last puzzle piece? But uh, that's, that's just, again, the community and how we met them was we were having a garage sale one day. And yes, we got the city of Woodway's permission. To get it, we had, we had our, our permit to have a garage sale. But we did, we did the right way. And so she popped over and introduced herself and we just became fast friends after that. So, um, yeah, but that's kinda just about who we are. Zach, unfortunately, uh, the pan- the pandemic, uh, interrupted.
Academic trouble, lost a little scholarships ahead. And then, but they did say, they were basically, cause of the pandemic, they were letting everyone come back. They they deep fought upset when I, when I was talking about it. They said, all you have to do is a formality, just, just appeal it or just like, just uh, they, they said just to fill out this program for this thing and. Where you'll be back again, as long as you at least, you don't fill it out and do it. And I was like, honestly, we just opened back up. I'm still not quite ready to waste more of my family's money going back and failing again. So I was like, I'm not right there yet. And then after, as soon as I took a break, and then it was just, we had a financial problem with this house. This house became like a giant. Quite a bit of money. It's now we're like, I was like, I gotta get a job now. And then now it's like, we gotta fix the house and then I gotta pay for my last year of law school. Cause I also have two degrees and a masters, so I have, I've been to school a lot, so I actually maxed out on student loans. So I can't get anymore.
So yeah, so we, we were pinching pennies and saving our dollars so we can finish up. Cause as I told you, it was his dream to be a lawyer and I'm, I'm gonna make sure.
Third grade. First time I wanted to be a lawyer was in third grade.
And I said, even though we had.
That or a football player. And then I broke my neck in high school, so that definitely wasn't happening.
Yeah, we may, we may have some speed bumps along the way, but we're, we were gonna make our dreams come true. It is life. You just gotta learn how to, you know, uh, the old adage, you know, life gives you lemon, you make lemonade, but you know. I say like, make lemonade vodka, but you know, same thing now. But we, we, we're, you know, we're gonna make it happen. You know, we're, we're fighters and even though life gets down sometimes, you just gotta. I hate to use the, the Republican saying, pull yourself up by your boot stress, but that's literally what you have to do, you know? And it's not a political saying, it's just a life saying. Um, I posted a few things about where I kinda might, where, where I get that fighting instinct from. I had. Amazing grandparents, my mom's parents were amazing, my dad's parents were amazing and, um, my dad's parents were in corporate, so we didn't know, we didn't get to see them as often, but. They were amazing people. Um, my, my pa- papa cunkle was a uh, air force pilot. He was in World War Two, but he was on the Pacific. Uh, side fighting over i- in Asia. And then, uh, my mom's dad, he was on, he was in the European side. Uh, he was injured actually twice, earned two Purple Hearts and and a, and a Bronze Star for his bravery there. Um. Met my grandmother and then they, they just, they just were like a second set of parents for me growing up. We were, we were over there. Every Sunday. I kinda said, yesterday I was doing my first Facebook Live, cause I just threw it for fun. And I was kinda said, it's, it was always a tradition that Sundays were our family day. Sundays are, you make a big fancy meal for your family. Just something that takes a little more time, a little more love. And you just get together and you celebrate being a family. And that's what we did growing up. Especially on su- football Sundays when the Cowboys played. You're darn tootin', we were always there. And actually it was cute, my grandmother was a Redskins fan, so whenever the Redskins and Cowboys played, they bet each other a dollar. Every game. It was always so cute. That's when they pass off that one dollar back and forth. But that's what my upbringing was and and you know, they were, they were fighters, you know, my grandfather. He dropped out of school in eighth grade to go with his brothers and pick potatoes and hide the, the, during the depression. I mean, so he had no education and after he got back from the war, he did use, um, gosh, I'm drawing a blank, what's it called? The, the, the bill to go to school. No, I can't remember. I'm sorry, I'm drawing a blank. But he used that to go get, he, he went back as GED and then, um, he did get a, um. Two-year degree from the community college. Um, but he read, he read all the time, all kinds of books, all kinds of history and. Really, my, my whole family read. My mom read a lot, my grandmother. So I got a passion for reading and education from them, just cause I was like. I I I think if my grandfather was still alive when Google became Google, he would have just never left the computer. He, he's like, we're, he'd been always just researching anything and everything. But I, I, I'm sad for him that he didn't get to experience that kind of information, but. He did what he did when he was here and uh, and then my grandmother was just always a sweetheart. I mean, I don't know why she, I was always her favorite. I mean. I know why, cause I'm amazing, but. She, we just had a, a unique bond. Even my mom would say she didn't even have that same bond with her mother that I had with her. So. She was just always there for me and supported me and and just everything and I was blessed. I, I, I grew up with a very blessed family. And it kinda makes sense probably why I was so attracted to this man, because when we first met, we actually met on a dating site. We will say that. Ha ha. He's younger than me, but we, we joke about it, but. I, at first I was like, oh, he's too good looking. He, uh, we're not gonna get to get along very well. He's probably like so conceited. And then like he had a picture of him and his grandmother together and I thought, oh, what sweet. And. Till we matched up and we went on date and got to know each other and I met his family and I was all like, this big Italian family, like all these cousins and cousins and cousins. I was just like. Wow, I love this. I love this. I love being part of this big family. I do call one cousin in particular and I'm always like, tell me what's the latest, cause we're not there anymore. So I do call her every couple, every couple of months and just be like, fill me in. But, uh, they're great though. His, the family support we get is amazing and. I just, I, I feel very blessed to be part of that. So I think we're both blessed with the, with the good families.
Well, that's probably a great place to end. Thank y'all so much for having me in, in your home.
I thought it'd be easier in the house.
It, it is much easier in the house.